Welcome and thank you for being with us today for the Palo Alto School Board Candidates Forum. I am Nancy Shepherd, President of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto. This year, we are proudly celebrating both our 100th anniversary and the passage of the 19th Amendment, enabling women the right to vote. The League of Women Voters envisions a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. We are a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government through education. Our organization has two distinct roles. One is advocacy for public policy issues that we have studied. The other is voter services, bringing voters impartial information on ballot initiatives and candidates. Voter services is the hat we are wearing tonight in presenting this forum, where you can learn about the candidates running to represent our area at the Palo Alto Unified School District Board meetings. Our co-sponsor for this forum is Palo Alto Council of PTAs, and we are being supported by Mid Peninsula Media. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates and our co-sponsor have all agreed to participate under guidelines set for this forum. Also, because this is a Zoom webinar, only the candidates and the moderator will have their mics activated. Due to the nature of webinar, we cannot provide technical assistance to viewers, and the chat function will be disabled. This forum is being livestreamed right now on one of Mid Penn Media's local channels and will be rebroadcast in the coming weeks. The League will also make this available on our YouTube channel. You can find this link at our website, l w v paloalto.org. Note that whenever this recording is aired, it must be shown in its entirety to ensure that no statements are used out of context. All candidates have agreed to this requirement. Conducting a candidate forum as a Zoom webinar is a new experience for all of us, and we hope you will be patient as we learn together. Let me now turn the program over to our moderator, Ellen Smith.
Thank you, Nancy. I'm pleased to be part of bringing you this opportunity to hear from the six candidates who are running for Palo Alto Unified School District Board. Three of the five seats on the board are up for election this year, and the candidates are Katie Cossey, Todd Collins, Jennifer DeBrienza, Jessie Latimeric, Matt Nagel, and Karnan Niswana. Before we begin, I'd like to go over the format of our session. We're scheduled to be finished by 8:00 PM. To keep us all on track, we'll be keeping time using a computerized stopwatch that will also randomly shuffle the order in which the candidates speak throughout the forum. We'll begin with an opening statement of up to two minutes from each candidate. We will then have a question period. Candidates will be called on in varying order for each question, and we'll have one minute each to respond. I remind the candidates that you can always provide shorter answers, and that might let us get to more questions. Questions for this forum were solicited in advance from all those who signed up to attend. We have reviewed the questions to avoid duplication and cover as wide a range of issues as possible. If time allows, we will also take some questions from the audience during the forum. You are welcome to send your questions for the candidates using the Q&amp;A box at the bottom of your screen. Please use the anonymous option, keep your questions succinct and directed to all of the candidates. Reminder, we may not be able to use any of these questions depending on time. We'll then have a closing statement from each candidate of up to one and a half minutes. So, let's begin with the opening statements, and we'll hear first from Ms. Latimeric.
Hello, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and PTAC for hosting us tonight. My name is Jessie Fletcher Latimeric. I was born and raised in Palo Alto and attended PAUSD schools all the way from kindergarten at Addison through graduation from Paly. From Paly, I went to Yale and then Berkeley Law. I'm a former public agency attorney and now CFO and general manager of a remodeling company that I own with my husband. We have four kids in the district, second, third, fifth, and eighth grades. In addition to regular volunteer stints in their classrooms, I have served on PAUSD's Equity Committee, provided academic support to low-income children at the Opportunity Center, and volunteered for six years in classrooms throughout the Ravenswood City School District. As a PAUSD graduate myself, a former attorney for public entities, a parent supervising distance learning, and a small business owner working to protect the safety and livelihood of my employees, I will bring a breadth of perspective and experience to the board that makes me uniquely qualified to serve. I'm running now because now more than ever, I believe an effective board must be informed by the lived experiences of the students it serves. As a parent of four of these students, I am deeply connected to the current PAUSD community, teachers and staff, parents and students. COVID-19 poses such difficult challenges for all of us. We are all anxious and scared. We are all craving certainty where there is none. My immediate concern is keeping our students engaged academically and nurtured emotionally, because all of them, even the oldest and most self-sufficient, are still children, and we must never lose sight of that. They need us to come together and do the work necessary to bring them through to the other side of this pandemic, thriving and excited about life and learning. That's why I'm running, to do this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Niswana.
Thank you all for being here tonight. My name is Karnan Niswana, and I'm a working mom of two kids at Addison Elementary School. I studied engineering at Princeton, and then after spending a year teaching computer programming at a polytechnic in Singapore, I went to UCLA for law school. For the last 20 years, I've been working as a lawyer, and currently I'm the Deputy General Counsel at Cadence Design Systems, where I manage a multimillion-dollar budget and a team of a dozen. I am also on the Board of Palo Alto Community Childcare, which provides elementary kids' clubs at PAUSD schools and has had programs running since June. With this background, I will bring to the school board the ability to identify and solve problems, from budget to communications to all of the different issues that are facing our district now. In my job, I'm the person you talk with to inspire a team to better performance, to fix outdated processes or communicate with various stakeholders, or to help people rebuild some broken relationships, all while staying logical and focused on moving forward instead of letting situations stagnate. While I'm focused on listening, I understand the importance of taking actions, and actions is what this school district needs. We have angry parents, scared teachers, and loss of trust. This can be fixed with more transparency, better communication, and really connecting with the variety of parents and community members that we have. I find that the voice of the people is really important, and then there's a real sense that people aren't being heard and that people's voices aren't being listened to. I think that this can be fixed, and I think that I'm the type of person who has the background and experience to help all of our students and all of our families feel connected to and proud of PAUSD. I'm running because I care about all of our students, and I want the best possible education for all of them.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel, please unmute yourself.
Yeah, just did it. Thank you for hosting us tonight. My name is Matthew Nagel. You can call me Matt. I'm running for school board to provide the educational experience and leadership experience that our board and our district needs right now. These last seven months have not been easy, and they should have been a lot better. A bit about me, I'm a doctoral student in the Educational Leadership for Social Justice Program at Cal State East Bay. My wife, Ms. Peñalosa, has taught at Escondido School in the Spanish immersion program here in Palo Alto for 20 years. My son, Mateo, is a freshman at Gunn High. He graduated from Fletcher in June and previously attended Escondido. He's also my campaign manager. My daughter, Anais, also attended Escondido internment and is now a junior at Yale studying chemical engineering. The top issue right now is getting back to school. To do that, we have to rebuild trust with our staff, and that includes teachers and classifieds. We have to fix our plan to actually reflect the reality in our classrooms. And the reality is that the staff still doesn't have all the supplies they need to begin class. Had that simple step been taken, been taken care of two months ago to provide PPE guest dividers installed properly, I don't think we would have seen the great disconnect between teachers and the board the last two or three meetings. While we work on getting students back in school, I also want to ensure that my child and all of your children have the best school experience possible. I'm talking about educational equity. That includes skillfully addressing the achievement and opportunity gap, which I have done in other districts in ways that benefited all our students and all our families. I've been a principal for 16 years, a vice principal for three, and a teacher for eight. I've attended almost 100 school board meetings in my last district, not to mention 100 more here online. I'm ready to serve on the board to fix the huge gaps in our reopening plan, protect our budget. For example, I'll vote to spend $200,000 on our students, not Public Relations Administrator, and support all of our students so they can again pursue their dreams the way my two kids have been able to pursue theirs. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. Thank you both to the League of Women Voters and to the PTA Council for sponsoring this great event, and thank you for all the audience members for joining us. I'm Todd Collins, and I'm your current school board president. I'm the father of three kids who have spent 32 combined years with PAUSD with one more to go. I went to Harvard undergrad and Harvard Business School, and I've spent my career as a businessperson and entrepreneur. I'm sure tonight we'll talk about a lot of current issues, and those are important. But at least as important is focusing on the fundamentals, which are the critical foundation we need in order to succeed at anything. Four years ago, PAUSD faced years of scandals and unforced errors, like the $6 million blunder and repeated Title IX investigations. We put an end to that, bringing in a team of new senior leaders and a culture focused on accountability, stability, and results. We can't take those things for granted, because without that kind of culture, we won't make sustainable progress on any important objective. When COVID is finally behind us, we'll have the same issues we had before, plus some new ones. We'll have pressure on our budget more than at any time since the Great Recession over 10 years ago. We'll need to strengthen partnerships with the city and other groups. We'll need to address large-scale learning loss and figure out how to fill the gaps. With these kinds of challenges, we'll need to make sure we focus on the most important things and put our effort and money where it matters most. I have the skills and experience to help guide us through these challenges. I bring independent thinking and data-driven judgment to everything I do. So if you think a kids-first, results-driven culture is important for our kids, I'm your candidate. And if you think forward-thinking fiscal management and avoiding fiscal blunders is critical, I'm your candidate. If you think candor, transparency, and directness are the right way to manage our schools, I'm your candidate. Thank you, everybody, for joining us, and I look forward to a great conversation tonight.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Hi, thank you. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. My name is Jennifer DeBrienza, and I currently serve our school board. I served as board president in 2019, last year. I'm an educator by profession, and I've worked as a teacher, staff developer, education consultant, and taught at Stanford after completing my PhD at the education school there. I have three kids, and I've been a parent in the district for over a decade. My oldest is a 10th grader, and my youngest is a 4th grader, so I've got almost a decade to go. This combination of experiences has given me the rare benefit of having the board perspective, the teacher perspective, and the parent perspective. It has given me added empathy and insight into these challenging situations. During my first term, we repaired our compliance with the Office of Civil Rights. We created a Title IX office. We increased education for students and staff about consent. I insisted on adding a full-time reading specialist to each of our elementary schools and amplified the crisis of dyslexia with a resolution and professional development plan to address it. I have advocated for an alignment in workload assessments and grading practices across courses and schools for the benefit of all students. We now find ourselves in the midst of our biggest crisis yet, serving and supporting all students through COVID and the recovery. This week, there's been a huge focus on elementary and its plan, but the work there isn't done at elementary or secondary. Mondays, our K-1 classes open up in person, and staff has spent a lot of time over the past few weeks making sure all the safety protocols are in place. At the secondary level, some of our students are thriving and synchronous, while others are struggling. Many are struggling academically, but many also need that interaction in lots of different ways. Finally, this term, I've worked to close our achievement gap through systemic work. We've started to make the necessary changes to our policies and practices and our culture and climate, but there's more work to do. I look forward to continuing that work in the next four years, and I look forward to the conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cossey?
Thank you. What everyone here knows is the solution to our current crises is education. Right now, there are students who are developing a passion for fighting climate change, for combating systemic oppression, for advancing healthcare. That happens here in our classrooms. My PAUSD education taught me I could lead. It taught me I could show up for others. Thank you for showing up for us tonight. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum as ballots arrive and for helping all eligible PAUSD students register to vote. My name is Katie Cossey. When I wrote my ballot statement, I tried to count all the hours of volunteer work I've done in this community, and I couldn't keep track. Since I was a teenager, I've spent my time assisting families, volunteering at community organizations, and in the last years, fundraising for nonprofits supporting youth. Through all this, for over a year, I have watched or attended every single board meeting and have looked forward to everyone, because I'm a PAUSD graduate, and our district knows how to create the type of ambitious civic-minded leaders who watch board meetings for fun. As a proud graduate of Aloney, JLS, and Paly, I know firsthand the values we instill in our students. PAUSD likes to be an incubator for firsts in progress in technology and student achievement. There are several firsts in my campaign. I'm the first young woman to run for the seat. I'm the first member of the LGBT+ community to run for the seat. I'm proud to be here tonight with many amazing candidates. This is a board position that requires working together, and there's no one I would rather work with than those who are willing to run for office. During a pandemic, fires, protests to advocate for our community, I'm so excited for the solutions we will be discussing tonight.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our questions. I remind you that you have one minute to answer the question. Our first question is, would you support establishing a department within the PAUSD that has real and specific authority to address equity and the achievement gap in our schools? If yes, what would you task that department with doing? If no, what specific approaches would you support to address this problem? And we'll begin with Mr. Collins.
Great. I love that question. The answer is absolutely yes. And the good news is, we have that department. It is our Department of Education Services, because the chief equity officer of our district is the superintendent. And the people responsible for delivering education are responsible for delivering education for every single child, not just the children who happen to do well under the system we have today. As some people know, we've tried having an outside department and equity coordinators, and I think the general view is that that has been unsuccessful. And it doesn't surprise me, because in most of life, if you want to get the most, if it's the most important thing, you have to make it the responsibility of the people who control the resources and make them accountable for the outcomes that are the most important outcomes. That's what we've tried to do. That's what the Palo Alto promises. That's what the movie The Needles theme is, about making sure that we close the achievement gap in measurable ways at our schools through the work of our superintendent, district office staff, principals, and teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Cossey?
Thank you. I would support that. We need clear goals and clear actions with where we're moving in equity. My degree focused on intersectional approaches to schools and communities. That means creating solutions where no one is left behind because of their race, gender, ability, background, class, or orientation. The board has spent the majority of the last year drafting the PAUSD promise, which is both our district's mission statement and how we measure success in the district. Last spring, I wrote to the board asking to set a deadline to draft the Equity Scorecard within the PAUSD promise, how we will measure and define success related to equity, and to expand it to not just students, but how we look at curriculum, hiring, staff, and practices, et cetera. I want clear goals in terms of related to equity of where we want to move in the next two years, three years, five years, 10 years.
Thank you. Ms. Niswana?
I would not support creating a new organization within PAUSD to focus on equity, because I believe it is a job of every single member of the PAUSD staff to focus on this issue and this topic. When you have leadership from the very top that truly focuses on the important issues and makes it the goal and responsibility of every member of the team to actually try to make a difference, and when you gather data and share that data, then I think you're going to see more results than creating an organization that, it's not clear to me, would actually be able to do anything or would be empowered to make a difference. So I don't think creating a group is going to make a difference. I think you need to hold the superintendent and hold the administration responsible. I think that they are the ones that can put together the programs to make a difference, and we need them to come up with more. We need them to report out on this regularly. And if they're not, they should be doing more, because we're not seeing the results we need.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza?
Thank you. This, to me, is a both-and. Everyone in the organization is responsible for it, and we need to have some specialists who really focus on this, because this has been a top priority for a very long time for the district, and the district has not made noticeable progress in it. So yes, it is something that every principal and every administrator and every teacher and every aide has to have front of mind, but we need support. We do have an Assistant Superintendent for Equity and Student Affairs, and she has staff that work along with her to support this work. But the work is not just individuals, it's systemic work. So no one individual is going to be changing policies and practices that are long entrenched in our system. And when our administrators are largely white, we don't necessarily have the perspective, and the board is largely white. We don't necessarily have all the experiences and the perspective that are needed to do this work. So we do have a position, and it's the responsibility of the entire organization, and we probably need some outside help, too.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel?
Yes, I've heard from a South Asian group that we spoke with last week. They're complaining about treatment towards them. I've talked to Asian parents in the last month, same kind of thing. And as a Latino and a Mexican-American myself, I've witnessed firsthand how my daughter was not seen as a top student. She went to another high school, and suddenly she's on her way to Yale. Same thing's happening with my son. His scores have actually gone down in the last three years here. We have a problem in how we deliver educational equity. It's not happening in all the classrooms. That's naive to think that it would be. So yes, to answer the question, I would absolutely try something different and create, not another organization, but label another department, beef up the webpage, survey our parents. Our parents are dying to tell these stories. I learned that through these forums. So I'm 100% in favor of this. We do have an Assistant Superintendent of Equity, but what we've been doing has not been working. We need to try new things.
Thank you. Ms. Latimeric?
Equity requires a district-wide commitment. It can't be siloed into one department. I think that's the mistakes that we've made in the past. PAUSD has been trying to close the opportunity gap for decades, yet our most recent CAS results again show wide disparities in achievement between Black, Latino, Indigenous children and their white and Asian peers. And these racial disparities persist even when controlling for economic status. The foundation of educational equity is the culture and climate of our schools. Tutoring, interventions, family supports are critical, and they must continue, but by themselves, they are not enough. We have to admit that our problems are structural and systemic and to get help with addressing them. Because after so many years of failure, I don't trust us to do this on our own. We can't just set up a new department and think that's going to solve it. As a first step, I would advocate for an equity audit in consultation with experts in the field of educational equity, and I would push for board action to establish student task forces to give us the metric of student wisdom on this issue.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our next question. How do you see the board's role in governance and oversight of the district's $260 million budget? What kind of changes would you like to see in the way the budget is set and managed? And we begin with Ms. DeBrienza.
Thanks so much. I think that in this year, we have a new CBO, and it's really been a joy to work with her and see how she's sort of taken apart the budget and built it back up in a way that we hadn't been used to in the past. As most people know, I think the majority of our budget, about between 85 and 90% of it, is compensation for teachers and all of our staff, all of our support staff and all of their benefits. And so traditionally, we've looked really at the, sort of at the icing on the top and thought about what we could do with that, instead of looking at the entire system and say, what are our staffing ratios? What should they be? Where is there a difference we can make in big terms on the budget? And so it's been, it was nice this year, starting to look at it that way. And then, of course, COVID has kind of thrown things for a little bit of a loop. But I think staffing is obviously the biggest lever that we have, and looking at how we are making staffing decisions, I think, is the biggest decision we can make.
Thank you. Ms. Niswana?
I think that when we are looking at budgets and we are considering the PAUSD budget, the most important thing for us to consider is where is our biggest spend? And PAUSD, like most companies, the biggest spend is in our people. And our people are important. They're critical, but we need to make sure that we are focusing on what's most important for students and what's most important for student education, and that we are looking at how we can best allocate our resources and where it makes sense to make changes. I think if I am on the board, one of the things that I would want to do is take a critical look at what that is, what that funding is, and where we are focused on our spend and work with the rest of the board members to make sure that we are focusing on what's most important and making the improvements and the adjustments where necessary.
Thank you. Ms. Cossey?
Thank you. I view the board as communicating, as responsible for communicating with the community of what we're trying to accomplish when we're setting our, when we're setting our budget. What are the goals we're moving towards? If, you know, if we're approving raises or when, if a community member asks, I want to say, like, it was important we do this so that we're working on teacher retention. Or we changed this because we're moving towards a smaller classroom size or equity or mental health. And as we move through the more difficult, as we move through the more difficult budget cuts under COVID-19, I want to make sure that we continue to stay consistent with cutting as far away from the classroom as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel?
Well, I want to look at administrative costs. Our enrollment is going down more than we were led to believe, and I kind of predicted that. So I don't think we need all these specialized administrators. I do think we need the equity administrator, but others, I think, based on my experience as administrator myself, I could identify ways to cut. It's true, 85% of it is just going to be salaries for classifieds, certificated. There's not a lot of wiggle room, but that's what makes the parcel tax so important. Reading in the newspaper that city council is questioning whether or not we need the parcel tax, the answer is yes, it must pass. Another communication error on sending out mailers that had an error in it did not breed confidence in our ability. So really, I would focus on not making these unforced errors, like the salary error four years ago and this parcel tax. It better pass, and if it doesn't, if I'm on the board, I'll push for a March ballot.
Thank you. Ms. Latimeric?
Yeah, I am CFO and owner of a small business. Our budget is not as large as PAUSD's, but it is still millions of dollars. And we're similar to the district in one crucial way, in that unlike so many other organizations, from startups to Fortune 500 companies to the federal government, we actually have to balance our budget. And when money is actually money, instead of monopoly money, it forces you to be principled about the way you spend it. And for me, this means two things, and these are the principles I will bring to approach budget, to approach governance and oversight. One, budgets are policy documents. They are literally quantifications of priorities. We need to put our money where our mouth is. Two, we must maximize the value of our investments. If we spend a dollar, we need to get a dollar's worth of value, or we need to find another way to spend a dollar. And the value needs to be measured by outcomes for students. So an example of this is mental wellness supports. Our spending has increased on these in recent years, and student use has also increased, but the need for crisis supports has increased also. So we aren't getting the value in terms of student outcomes.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. I want to build on what Ms. DeBrienza said. I think we've taken a really important step forward in the way we manage our budget. For years, we would sit and get a $265 million budget that was 99% rolled over from the year before, and the board would spend time fighting over how to allocate like the last $100,000 of a $265 million budget. It was both gross micromanagement and an incredible distraction from the real effort of allocating our money where it was going to be most used. Our new CBO and our new superintendent have brought a process that now lets the board get in on the basic assumptions of what we think is important before the $265 million gets allocated, including the staffing. And an example of that is this year, we increased by millions of dollars funding for special education and dyslexia, which are two of my top priorities in areas where I think we can dramatically both reduce costs and improve our services for those communities. So I think we're headed, the board's role is to make sure we allocate the money the way it's going to be most effective, and I think we've made some good progress in the last couple of years.
Thank you. Our next question, how do you see the role How do you see the role of standardized testing in the PAUSD? And we'll begin with Ms. Nice Warner.
I think testing is really important. I think it's important because it gives us a look into what's going on with our students. It's one of the ways in which we can see that there is an achievement gap and that there is something that's not happening that needs to happen. If we don't have some form of standardized regular testing, and then look at why it is like that, and then take action to then come up with plans to help students achieve better, and then educate the teachers and work with the teachers on that, then I don't think we are doing, we are doing our job. So I'm a big fan of regular, consistent testing that can be used to evaluate student performance and be used to identify where there are gaps and where we need to make changes in order to have improvement.
Thank you. Ms. Latimerak.
PAUSD is an incredibly high-performing district. People come here for the schools. As long as colleges require standardized tests, PAUSD is going to support kids in taking them. Otherwise, we would not be setting our kids up for success. But I do think that we also have a responsibility to make sure that we focus in our classrooms on learning and deep academic engagement and not just, not just scores and test scores. And I think that the balance of this is crucial for student mental wellness. It's crucial for learning, and it's crucial for the environment of our classes. So of course, we're going to prioritize these and preparing students for them. But we also have to balance that and really make sure that learning is the focus in our classrooms.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. This is a great question. I want to distinguish that there are tests like SAT tests, which are oriented college admission. But I'm going to focus on the CASP/SBAC test, which are our standardized tests. These are critical for seeing how we're actually doing compared to ourselves over time and to other districts for the same types of kids. Without this, all we have to go by is our own inspection. And like most people will probably say, well, we're probably doing a pretty good job. The fact is, we'll have no idea how good a job we do unless we're compared to others. It's very important, though, this is not a way to measure the performance of kids. We have teachers and grades and internal assessments that are far more granular and timely to do that job. This is to measure how the district is doing and to see whether we're, as an organization, are actually doing our job and to hold people accountable for improvement over time. That's something we haven't done in the past, and I think it's critical to be successful at anything we want to accomplish going forward.
Thank you. Ms. Causey.
I'm going to pivot off of the previous answers. I think that absolutely there is a value to standardized tests. But when student well-being, empathy, learning, student wellness, when those things are at the strongest, that's when we see amazing student performance. So standardized testing are only as useful when we also have them with other data, like our California Healthy Kids surveys. One of the things that I'm looking forward for in improving is the number of trusted adult relationships in our California Healthy Kids surveys. That is a direct indicator of youth social isolation. And when we've seen from all of the youth nonprofits in the area that when students have more trusted adult relationships, they're more likely to be healthy, they're more likely to be successful. So I think these tests are useful when we also incorporate them with other measures of success.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza.
Thanks so much. So as an educator for almost 30 years, assessments are near and dear to my heart. And assessments can be very, very useful in telling us a lot of things. The way that an assessment tends to be useful is if it provides feedback that is both timely and specific. Standardized tests, by definition, rarely do either one of those things. You don't get timely feedback. We often don't hear the results until the next academic year, so we can't necessarily do, you know, intervention work on that. And they are not very specific often. That being said, obviously, assessments do serve a role in a standardized test. We have found, one of the questions I asked when I first joined the board was, are these standardized tests reflected in the assessments that we give in our district? And in fact, they are. Beginning of the year and end of the year assessments tend to reflect what these standardized tests do. So I think they're a fairly accurate measure of how we are serving kids, and they have a purpose, although I'm glad that our district does not hold them up as the judge of our district overall.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel.
Well, I, my school was one of the first, back in 2012, to pilot, to pilot the Smarter Balance Assessment. So I really gave it a fair shot in 2012, 2013, and then everybody had to practice in California in 2013, 2014. And then after a couple of years of doing it, seeing the results, it's a summative test. Again, I get the scores in July or August. You know, I don't know how to say this. I want to say this in the nicest way possible, but the Smarter Balance Assessment is almost worthless in terms of guiding instruction, almost worthless in taking that amount of time, dedicating that amount of time. And at my old school, what turned out to be successful was not focusing on the Smarter Balance Assessment. For one, we don't have the features in California that, for example, the state of Washington has, which is Better Practice Test, Mini Test, which allows to drill down to basically line items. So the Smarter Balance Assessment is not a reflection of how well the students are doing and not a reflection of how well our district is doing. The SAT and ACT are much more important, even though a lot of universities have not taken them. But really, formative assessment is the way to go.
Thank you. Our next question. Parents are currently given the option to either return their children to in-person school in the fall or commit to distance learning for the entire school year. Would you consider offering more flexibility, such as an option where students could return to in-person school at some point later in the year? And we'll begin with Mr. Nagel.
I'd like to offer as much flexibility as possible because these are such uncertain times. I'm not in favor of live streaming, which in the sense of a teacher, let's say my wife, she's teaching a class, and she's live streaming at the same time. There's too much that still goes wrong with technology to really make that workable or feasible. But I would like to offer more flexibility than we parents are currently being offered, which is you choose now and you're locked in for the year. There's nothing definite about how this school year is going, so I don't see why we have to be so rigid on the offerings to parents. There should be a lot more flexibility. And I'd like to have some sort of system to where, with a couple of weeks' notice, a month or so, that a parent could revert back to another option.
Thank you. Ms. Latimerak.
Yes, I would absolutely be in support of this. At the last board meeting, Superintendent Austin also seemed to be in support of it, suggested that if at all possible, the district will give parents an option to make another choice in January. I think it gets more complex because now at that point, kids have been in school for months and stability. You know, right now, it's already a little unstable with kids may have to shuffle between teachers, and parents are nervous about that. I think in January, we absolutely can't be moving kids away from their teacher in their classroom. So I think the realities of space and staffing are going to be, are going to be a big deal in January. But I'm hopeful that we're going to be flexible as a district, and I was appreciated hearing the superintendent say that we're open to that in January, and I will definitely advocate for that.
Thank you. Ms. Causey.
I want us to be as flexible as possible. As I said, this is very uncertain times. I'm really, really worried that we've spread our people on the ground really thin. I'm the only candidate endorsed by the PEA, and I am so worried that our staff and our educators have been spread really thin in this time, and we can only do things if it's possible. And we are nothing without our people. We can only get learning done if our educators feel confident learning in the current crisis, teaching in the current crisis. And so what I'm going to be looking for when I take office in December is really rebuilding that trust and communicating a lot with our educators on the ground.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza.
Yeah, this is obviously top of mind for most elementary families right now. I am an elementary family myself, and it's been hard. From the summer, when we thought we were going to open hybrid, but we were shut down by the governor, we said as soon as the county gave us permission to open, we would offer that. And we have, and a lot of families are upset that we have made the switch now, but it's the target that we had if we were allowed to, and we are. And more than half of the families have opted for this hybrid model. I would love to see us have an option in January. My big concern is, and Ms. Latimerak mentioned it, I think, is that the biggest stressor that is on families right now is the possibility of switching teachers. And if we do, if we offer another decision point in January, that might happen again. I think I'd be more interested in maybe ask families, if you know you're going to be remote for the whole rest of the year, you can choose that and you won't be shaken up again. But if you think you still want to have that option in January, maybe we can offer it, but you need to know that you might be now having a third teacher in the school year, which is hard.
Thank you. Ms. Nice Warner.
I think the biggest difficulty with flexibility, which a lot of parents want, is it also creates instability. There's instability in the classrooms, in the teachers, in the friends. And one of the complaints you hear from families is, I don't like that my student is gotten used to something, and now they're going to have a new teacher, or they're going to have somebody else in their classroom. And so by offering this flexibility, we create instability in the educational structure for our children. And is that really a good thing? Other school districts forced everyone to decide at the beginning of the year, will you do distance or will you go to hybrid when that's available? And we did it. We said we want to have flexibility, but there's a cost for that. And as long as we are cognizant of the cost and all the families are comfortable with that cost, then it's nice to be able to offer flexibility. I would like to be able to offer flexibility so that when we hit the yellow zone, we can go to 100% in person.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. I think the other candidates have really covered this well. I agree. I think at the board meeting, the board asked for and actually voted for clarity that we were not locking people in for the year, and the board would have an option to offer people a change in, some form of change in January, if conditions dictated that that was a prudent thing to do. I think people have done a good job identifying the trade-offs that the board would have to look at. And I think the bar is high because, as somebody said, if you don't want teachers, you don't want kids to have three teachers in a year, and you don't want teachers to have to change their classes three times in a year. So the bar is going to have to be high, but it may be, conditions being, changing rapidly, that there are circumstances that make us want to do it. So I would love to have flexibility, but I think we have to be cognizant of the costs.
Thank you. Our next question. What is your position on laning in the middle and high school? And our first answer would be from Ms. Causey. Sorry, we caught you unprepared.
Sorry, no, I needed some tea right before I spoke. I oppose laning, but we're not moving away from laning anytime soon. This is one of the reasons I've advocated for the Equity Scorecard, because I think when we say that we're opposing in our mission statement, we say that we seek to identify forms of systemic oppression. Lanning can be a form of systemic oppression. It can really impact student mental health regularly. We're not negatively, we're not moving, we're not getting rid of laning, but we need to have clear goals for the coming years with, okay, what does it look like if we are going to have laning, and we are going to be taking a stance on combating forms of systemic oppression?
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, when this came up last, I think before the board, maybe three or four years ago, I did some research. 98% of the high schools in the United States use some form of laning, 98%. And so I think it is a widely accepted tool, and it is not going to, PAUSD is not going to move away from it anytime soon. Now that said, laning, like all things, has pros and cons. And one of the cons is it can discourage kids who are not in the lane that is appropriate for them for achieving the academic success that they're capable of, and that's bad. So one of the things that I expect our educators to do, and they do, is review their own practices to figure out what are the right number of lanes? And can we combine lanes? Should we combine lanes? Will the cost of that outweigh the benefits or the other way around? And I think that's exactly what they should be doing, and the board should encourage them because we should be encouraging practices that include education for all, that improve education for all students.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza.
Yeah, I've worked in many, many schools that, many have laning, many don't have laning. But I've seen some secondary schools that have no lanes, and they work marvelously well. They're inspiring places to be. But it requires something, right? It requires a community that wants that. It requires teachers who feel prepared to teach that. It requires a particular pedagogy, and that's not what PAUSD is. I don't see PAUSD necessarily wanting that or being in a position to do that. So although I have seen it work well and it can work well, I don't think that we are there. We have lanes, and I don't see us getting rid of them anytime soon. And I think it is really important that kids have an opportunity to, you know, to move around and to, if they want to challenge themselves and try to jump up a lane if they can, and that we support kids in whatever lane they're in, finding success there.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel.
Yeah, my daughter on the east, when she was at Terman in sixth grade in 2012, she was not in the top math lane, so she was going to be relegated to the average lane. And I say relegated because what happened was, her mom and I, fearing that, you know, she's a Mexican-American girl, and as Todd said, 98% of these schools have laning. And I would counter that 98% of the schools have this huge achievement and opportunity gap as well. And so we said, you know what? Let's take her with me to Marin County. The year after that, I put her in geometry because I was the principal. I could do that, but we couldn't offer algebra, so I had to put her there. And that was the moment. That was the moment that everything changed for her, when we saw her as a scholar. And that's why she's a junior at Yale, doing very well right now in math and science. One of the few Mexican-American girls in our country in this kind of program. So laning's not going to go anywhere. It's not a matter of being for or against it. I'm more focused on getting that rigor that we offer in laning to all of our students, especially our BIPOC students. Everyone should have that rigor. Everyone should have that challenge.
Thank you. Ms. Nice Warner.
For me, this question raises the issue of assessment and opportunity, and making sure that we are assessing all of our students so they're getting the right education at the right time. I think lanes serve a purpose. They allow a teacher to focus on a set of students who have certain similar qualities and characteristics and abilities. When a teacher has students that are in multiple lanes, it can be more difficult. Multiple abilities in one classroom, it can be difficult. And one of the things I've heard from students is that there's an unintended consequence of putting all of those students together, is that the people that are stronger feel bored, and sometimes the people that are not as strong feel embarrassed or feel bad about themselves. So I think we need to be very careful about whatever we choose to do and make sure that there aren't unintended consequences. And we need to focus on making sure we're assessing and offering opportunity to everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Latimerak.
Yes, I do support some laning. We need to make sure, however, that we don't lane kids so early or so rigidly that we end up limiting their college choices before they've even gotten to high school. Because this is the opposite of empowering them to meet their potentials. Kids mature at all different times, and our education system needs to allow for that. And whatever lanes our kids are in, their classroom environments must support and not undermine those potentials also. You know, when I was at Paly, my BC calculus teacher was extraordinarily skilled and supportive, and he empowered me to push beyond where I thought my limits were. And that's what a classroom should strive for. We limit our kids' capacity to succeed if we make them terrified of mistakes or imperfection. Learning and mastery of concepts should be the key. They should be, they should push themselves and not be afraid to fail. Though, those are the lessons I want them to take away from PAUSD.
Thank you. Okay, our next question. What is your opinion of the social justice programs in our high schools? Would you encourage an expansion of this type of offering, and if so, in what form and at what grade levels? And we begin with Mr. Collins.
The social, so for instance, the Social Justice Pathway at Paly is a great example of exactly the kind of program that works well. It was inspired by, it was driven by teachers who were very committed to offering this kind of program and had strong ideas about what they wanted to do. They found that there were students who shared, who had a strong desire to take that kind of curriculum and enjoy that kind of program. And together, they were supported by the principal and by the district office to develop a pathway, which was a new thing for us, that allowed a multi-year curriculum that kept a group of students together in a way that allowed them to build that allowed them to build a community of learners. What is not to like about that? I want more of that and for everything we do. And we've tried to create more pathways, both in social justice and in other areas. Because it brings out the best in both our faculty and our students. And that's really what any good education system is trying to do.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza.
Yeah, the Social Justice Pathway is, you know, one of many pathways, as Mr. Collins mentioned. And the people that are in them tend to really like them a lot. Social Justice actually just started at Gunn. There's now a pathway at Gunn as well. The thing that stands out to me about the question you asked, though, really, I think, has to do with the kind of learning kids do in the Social Justice Pathway. And I think, you know, different pathways focus on different things. But in this particular pathway, I think there's a couple of things going on. One is kids having a chance to learn in interdisciplinary way. Their history and their humanities teachers work together and provide different opportunities for kids. And I think that all children benefit from that kind of learning and that kind of critical thinking and making connections across curricula. And then there's just the work of looking at justice, looking at justice big picture. And I think that that is work that should be happening, starting in kindergarten, all the way up through 12th grade, in ways that are just great appropriate all along.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel.
Well, my uncle, actually, my grandfather, my uncle and my mother were very active in the Chicano movement in the 60s. They marched in the Chicano Moratorium 50 years ago, 50 years ago in two months. And that carried on to the work I do. I'm now in the Educational Leadership for Social Justice doctoral program for a reason. So I totally support this. I encourage its expansion. And I think the real question that you should have asked everybody here is, do you support a high school graduation requirement for ethnic studies? My answer right now is, I don't know. I'm still weighing that. I do support having TK to 12th grade infusion of ethnic studies. For example, I taught transitional kindergarten, kindergarten first and second grade at Bodega Bay this year. And we took all the books from Mitchell Library, about 30 of them on Black Americans. And we taught that, I taught that in September, because I can. Then we did Mexican-Americans a month later. But it would be good to really, really use our equity person to encourage that.
Thank you. Ms. Causey.
Thank you. Exactly as Mr. Collins said, this is a fantastic example of when a pathway is driven by students and teachers. And we really do need a program like this at all grade levels and for social justice. Because this is something our students really need right now. It's something we're seeing in the world. Our students were the first ones to march with Black Lives Matter signs. And also, there's been teachers in this district who have been teaching social justice, starting at a very early age. There's a really fantastic second grade teacher where he has been teaching this for almost 20 years. And he's like, every year, there's people who tell me, kids are too young to learn these things. And he's like, well, he's like, I've had first weeks of school where students ask about race and they ask about gender and what families look like. And when you start those conversations early, it makes it easier for the harder conversations that happens when students get older.
Thank you. Ms. Latimerak.
Yes, I am hugely supportive of the Social Justice Pathway. And I really think there are two, there are two issues going on. There's the type of learning and then there's the content of the learning. This type of learning, this interdisciplinary connections between courses provides a space for kids to have really deep, meaningful academic engagement. This is exactly the type of work we should be encouraging in our schools. There's a waitlist for the Social Justice Pathway. I would love to see as many kids be able to take this as want to. And then the content of the course, you know, this is how we create politically engaged civic-minded kids to talk about this stuff, these issues that they're seeing, you know, through history and literature and then also playing out outside their windows. Elementary school is certainly a time to start having these conversations. Not in the same way as in secondary school, but this is where we have the space and these connections in these classrooms to start letting kids talk about this, because they're aware and they see it, and we need to encourage that.
Thank you. Ms. Nice Warner.
One of the things that I've learned through the process of this campaign is that there's a lot of cultural insensitivity within the Palo Alto neighborhoods. And this became a really big concern of mine. Because I don't think that we are teaching our students about all of the variety of cultures that exist here in Palo Alto and around the world. And to really appreciate all of them and appreciate all of the differences between all of the different people here in Palo Alto. And so I do think it's really important that we encourage from the earliest years, something in all of the classrooms that focuses on learning about others, learning about difference, learning about things that were not great and how they've improved or things that are still not great that we still need to work to improve. And I think that this is something that we can encourage. And it's something that we can encourage in an interdisciplinary manner or within the coursework that already exists today.
Hey, thank you. Our next question. What practices and policies are in place? Did I, no, sorry. What practices and policies are in place to foster effective community, parent, school, communication and partnership? What could be improved upon? And we'll start with Ms. Nice Warner.
What policies and practices are in place? Well, we get a number of different emails. We get, we have our PTAs, we have our PI, we have our school board meetings. There are a lot of different things in place. I think that the gap we have in our community today is around how those are put together in a way that's easily digestible so that people understand what's going on and what's happening. And so you don't have surveys hidden at the bottom of a 40-page email and you know what the calendar is and when it's been updated. And so to me, it's not a matter of, do we have different things in place? It's a matter of how is that information organized and how are people being communicated to? And then also, how are we getting information back from people? What kinds of surveys are being done? How are we checking in with students, with teachers, with parents to really hear what they want and hear what their issues are? And I don't think we've invested enough in figuring out the best methods to get that, although task forces and more surveys may help.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel.
Yes, as Karna said, PTAs are hugely important. They do, when I worked with the Want to Be Honest PTA, they did their darndest to include as many people as possible. Site councils, another one. The biggest one for me was the ELAC, the English Learner Advisory Committee. Those parents, when I left in 2012, like a week before I even announced, they honored me on Mother's Day with flowers, with cards. And it brought me to tears because I was just treating them as I would treat anybody. And that's all people want. But the festivals and events we have were things that everybody, connects everybody. And especially, I Want to Be Honest, we had the Wana Run. We had an international festival. I know most schools have that international festival. And you want to spread that around because it can bring more people in. I know Todd has done some work with EPA with their meetings over there. And so that's an example of a good connection that he's made. I'd like to see all candidates do that and reach out. My friend, my son's friends, they're in EP as well. The final thing is just athletic. We have middle school and high school athletics. I'd like to see some elementary school, fourth and fifth grade athletics.
Thank you. Ms. Causey.
Thank you. I am so proud of the PAUSD promise. I think it's so fantastic that our district has developed a mission statement and how we measure success. I'm going to keep bringing it up, but I think setting a deadline for the Equity Scorecard and making that very thorough to apply to all of our practices and the goals of where we're moving in terms of equity. I'll also throw in that I think incorporating anything with student voices helps us to proactively respond to problems before they arise. And if I was on the board and somebody brought forth a proposal similar to 2017 where students asked that it be required for, that student feedback be required before major board decisions, I would support that because I think often student feedback is too little, too late.
Thank you. Ms. Latimerak.
Yeah, so I think two things. One, I think communication is really about transparency. And so just how transparent the district is being with the community in terms of making information actually readily available. Not something you have to kind of read through a 40-page email or go on the website. But I also think what's really important is that communication is a two-way street. And I think that where the district really can improve is in getting communication from the community. And I think we need a much broader swath of perspectives of parents and students. And I'm really committed to prioritizing being proactive about reaching out to students and families to get the voice of people who don't already feel empowered to speak up. I would like to establish student task forces at each high school on some of the intractable issues in our district, like mental wellness, like educational equity, to get the metric of the student voice, which I think we're really missing right now.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza.
Thanks, yeah. There's been a lot to communicate to the community over the past six, seven, eight months. And I think that there's been a tremendous amount of information put out. And I think it's at times really hard to manage it and to figure out how to make it most digestible, as some other candidates have said. I also think that the lines back in, which I think probably is what this question is more asking, is how does the community and the students and the parents and the teachers communicate back to the district and the administration? And there's lots of avenues for that, but obviously they are complex and there's a lot of players. PTA is one of them. And then PTAs all coming together to form PTAC is huge. But not everyone is involved in them. Student government for students is a huge opportunity, but not everyone participates in those in that way. The district, for a while, has had events where we go and just, when we were in person, go into school with a bunch of pizzas and get kids, students, to talk to us as the administration and the board. I'd like to see us doing that again. And I'm out of time, so I'll stay.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. Yeah, I think other people have mentioned some of the issues and perspectives that I have. We have all been drinking from the fire hose in terms of the rate of change, the amount of information that needs to be sent out, particularly from the district office as opposed from the schools directly. So it's been difficult and challenging, I think, for virtually everybody. I do think there's an issue, this is as much an issue about listening and feedback as it is putting information out. And so, yeah, there's no, communication is a two-way, is a two-way street, not a one-way. And, you know, both ways have to be functioning for it to work. Something I'm going to propose at our board meeting next Tuesday, we have an item specifically about this, is that we form a task force, which is something that we have not been doing as much because in the past, task forces are where ideas went to die. I served on a bunch. But instead, have a short task force to basically focus on communication, two-way communication, both with employees and with the community. Because I think it's an area where there are a lot of perspectives to be incorporated. And I think the board would be well advised to get some advice and thinking before going off and taking action.
Okay, thank you. In order for us to finish on time, this will be our last question. What lessons do you see in the pandemic experience that might alter PAUSD education post-COVID? And we'll begin with Ms. Latimerak.
Yeah, thank you. So first, the first lesson, I think, is the breakdown of the relationship between the district and the teachers. We have to figure out what happened. I don't, I think the most important thing is figuring out how to move forward and rebuild trust. And I'm hopeful that if we figure out how to do that, that we'll really learn some lessons of how to be better partners when difficult issues come up in the future. I think another lesson is the fact that students felt differently than parents about some pretty big issues, such as synchronous and asynchronous learning. And so getting the metric of the student voice is something that we need to prioritize as a board to make sure we're making information with all of the relevant perspectives. A third thing I think we've learned is that starting school later is better for our secondary school kids. I think we knew that, but it took maybe the impetus of this happening to really implement it. So I hope we can continue that moving forward as well.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Hey, this is an awesome question. Thank you. A lot of people are calling this the Great Reset. And I think for a lot of organizations, that's a really good name because we've been pushed beyond the boundaries, well, way beyond the boundaries of things that are comfortable and familiar. And we've had to on the fly try to, yeah, decades worth of new things under battlefield conditions. And, you know, I see some, so I think it's actually a great opportunity for us to take some of those lessons. And I agree with a couple that Jesse just mentioned. Finding out how to make distance learning work at scale. That's something that I think we can take advantage of for all kinds of kids, for all kinds of reasons. For instance, kids at one high school taking courses at another high school, which has always been a goal, never been accomplished. That's something we ought to be able to do going forward. A second is how to make independent learning work for students at home. We've found that some kids, not a huge number, but there are some kids who thrive under distance learning conditions and want that. There are families who want that for their kids. There's no reason we shouldn't be able to provide it. So I think there are really good opportunities to learn from our forced experiments and build it into our going-forward practice.
Thank you. Ms. Nice Warner.
I think that the pandemic has forced us to try a whole bunch of new things. And my hope is that we learn from this, how to do things better in the future. How to incorporate more distance teaching as it makes sense for certain students. How to incorporate technology into the classrooms in new and varied ways, because I think that that is great. I think it's also going to force us to look at our planning and make sure we have better disaster planning. So if there's a shutdown in the future for one school or two schools or all the schools, what kind of planning and infrastructure and task force do we already have in place so that we can just bring up that plan and say, okay, here's a starting point? Because I think what troubled us so much this time is we didn't know where to start from. But now we know what to start from, where we could at least start from. And so I hope what we take away from this is having better plans in place that we can use as a starting point to pivot a lot quicker. Because we didn't pivot very quickly in the spring. And I think that that is something that we can do better in the future.
Thank you. Ms. DeBrienza.
Thank you. Yeah, some of them have already been mentioned. The silver lining of all this is that we got to do things like align our schedules across our secondary schools and provide later start times. And it's something that we knew was important. And there's lots of reasons why it didn't happen before, but now we're there. And hopefully those will be permanent, that will give us more flexibility. I think that we have certainly found that some things work fine online, especially for some kids. So even when, you know, we're in a post-world and we're back in person, really thinking about what can give us more flexibility and more economy of scale by keeping some things online, some options online. We are reminded that we have a very diverse community. And for everyone that was saying, we want more synchrony, there were people saying, we want less synchrony. And for everyone that was saying, we want to come back in person, there were people saying, no, don't come back in person. So it's just a reminder that it's a very diverse community. We live in with lots of different priorities. And we learned that although we never want to do it again, our staff and our teachers can work for about 150 straight days without a single day off. And it's certainly not what you want your staff doing, but they really worked.
Thank you. Ms. Causey.
I think crisis learning has taught us the importance of communication and innovation. I think that moving forward, rebuilding that trust will start with receiving essential input like regularly scheduled reports from PAE and CSCE at board meetings. I trust our educators' professional expertise to create options where no one is left behind. What we've learned in A New Normal is that that's going to look like unconventional approaches, such as repurposing classified staff. In the Great Depression, a lot of unconventional approaches were taken to support young people. Small performances and puppet shows popped up to help bring communities joy. Today, those turned into a lot of modern-day children's theater programs that are pillars of so many communities. PAUSD has often led in progress and innovation. And I know we can give our students the strongest education possible. If we support our educators, we can use this crisis to develop the next leading practices to support vulnerable students.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel.
Yeah, you know, it's one of my favorite movies is A Bug's Life. And it's the first rule of leadership, it's always your fault. And so the first lesson, the first thing that COVID revealed is the lack of leadership. And I've said it before, at all levels. But, you know, the board and the superintendent, they have to own this. They're the board, they're the superintendent. It didn't go well. And, you know, it didn't go well for a lot of people. So they're not too much out of the norm there. As far as communication, I worry about creating a bunch of task forces. Only people like me and these candidates are going to be the ones that are going to volunteer to be on them. You're not going to get that parent of a student that teachers have that they weren't able to get online or that they weren't able to get their work done. You've got to reach out. You've got to engage and go to their homes and get that two-way communication going. But what matters? Well, that's the last lesson. Smart balance assessment, doesn't really matter. The grades, not as important. Student wellness turned out to be one of the biggest things that matter. Their development and growth, their wellbeing. The last lesson, people matter, not programs.
Thank you. As it turns out, we have time for one, what we're calling sort of bonus question, which, or which you will get 30 seconds. Let me dig it out here. Would you share with us a book that you would recommend? Would you share with us a book that you would recommend to a student, your choice of grade level? I'll give you five seconds to think, and then we'll begin with Ms. DeBrienza.
Yeah, without a doubt, Zen Shorts. It's a book that I would recommend to a kindergartner or an adult. It is a couple of different short stories about really trying to stay zen in difficult situations. It is a superb book. It is one of a series of three, actually, Zen Ties and Zen Ghosts, but Zen Shorts is my pick for sure.
Thank you. Ms. Kazi.
You got to be careful because I'm a former women's studies major, so I want to pull up like 50 different feminists and post-racial theorists. But I think I would have to go with, oh, there's so many, probably anything by bell hooks. I think that literature like that, that talks about really lived experience, it helped me understand my experience as experiencing sexism and experiencing homophobia, and it really helped, would help our students feel a lot less isolated.
Thank you. Mr. Nagel.
Drink Cultura by, oh, gosh, I forget his name. It starts with a V. He's a, he was a Stanford professor, he's died, he passed away. But it's basically about the Mexican-American experience in, in, in America, and it's what I think we should read more of in Palo Alto at all grade levels, to learn more about each other in a multicultural way. And just like Katie said about bell hooks, that that lived experience, kudos to her. She can teach me my program.
Could I ask you to repeat the title of the book?
Drink Cultura.
Okay.
C-U-L-T-U-R-A. By a Stanford professor, he passed away.
Right, okay, great. Ms. Nice Warner.
I would have high school seniors read a book called Soldier Girls, The Battle of Free Women at Home and at War. It was by Helen Thorpe. It deals with the look of women in the Midwest who went to Afghanistan and Iraq and their experiences coming back. There's a lot of mental health issues, there's just a lot of sort of raw emotion and a sense of what other parts of our country are like and the experiences that people have. I found it just wonderful.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
I'm so glad you asked this. I am a, I committed about five years ago to something that I thought was hard, which is I read a book a week. And I have found it the most wonderful undertaking I've ever had in my life, to know that you can, are setting aside the time to do it, and that you can read virtually anything, and, and you find how much there is good to read. A great book I'd recommend is by Doris Lessing, the Nobel Prize winner, called The Grass is Singing. And, and one of the things that Lessing does in all her books is she brings out, as a couple of people say, the lived experience, I mean, the the real personal experience of what it's like to take somebody else's perspective and see the difficulties that they have in life. And I found it tremendously moving and inspiring.
Thank you. Ms. Latimerak.
Yeah, for little kids, I would rec, I would recommend any book by Todd Parr. He writes about books about it's okay to be different, all different kinds of families. I have two adopted kids in my family, so it's been, they've been a really great series of books to just read and sort of talk about how families look different. So those are great for little kids. For older kids, I would recommend Good Lord Bird, which I know is a lot, the, the, I think it's a short documentary series or a series right now is in the news, but the book is funny and, and just an amazing re, look at history in a different way.
Okay, thank you all. I was sitting here writing them all down. Got some more things, and I love your idea of really letting yourself read a book a week. That's great. So we'll now have the closing statements. Reminder that each candidate has one and a half minutes, and we'll begin with Mr. Nagel.
Okay, well, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for taking the time and effort to set, set up this forum tonight. Ellen, you were amazing.
Thank you.
These forums are helpful in getting my message out because, you know, I've only bought about a dozen signs, and yes, they are plastic. None of these signs are good for the environment, shame on us. Regardless, these forums are invaluable for informing my work as a board member because I get to meet and exchange ideas with so many students and so many community members. I'm running for school board based on the depth and breadth of my experience as a principal, a teacher, and the most important and challenging job that I've ever had, being a parent, much like all of you. I am a candidate who is a parent but also has the most educational and leadership experience. Make sure that you visit PrincipalMatt.com should you have any questions or want to email me, especially if you were one of my former students. I want to make sure we all focus on the needs of 2020. This is not 10 years ago. We're in a new reality here, and I hope to serve on the board and lead our way through this. If you want to donate money, please donate to the East Palo Alto Tennis and Tutoring Program, the Dolores Huerta Foundation, or the Daraja Academy in Kenya. Thank you all for your support, and have a good night.
Thank you. Ms. Nice Warner.
Thank you all for attending this forum and listening to all of us speak. This has been a wonderful experience for me, learning about all the different issues that our community is facing. And I think, to me, as a working parent with kids in the school district, the need for transparency from our school district, the need for clear and concise communication on things that are important, is so important to me. In my work with PAC and in my job, managing a large budget and being able to think about the implications of the budget decisions you're making is also so important. And I feel like I'm going to bring to the school board this school responsibility, transparency and clear communication, and a real focus on making sure that every student in PAUSD gets the best education possible, because we are all here for the same reason. We really want what's best for the students of the school district. We want what's best for Palo Alto. And I think that I can work with whoever on the school board to make that a reality. And I look forward to the opportunity to work with everyone and to improve the things that need improving and to heighten the awareness of the issues that we're facing in this community and the need for people to have a place to voice their concerns and voice their issues and feel like they're being heard. And thank you so much, and please vote.
Thank you. And Ms. Kazi.
Thank you. I am running because my mom woke up at 5:00 AM to go to work and came home at 7:00 PM for almost three decades, so I could be a student in this district. I am running for every parent who has asked me for childcare in a pandemic. I'm running for every LGBT plus student who messaged me excited to see someone like them. I'm running because I attended this district during a community mental health crisis and a recession, and I know the teachers in this district who save lives. Our community was in crisis then and it is now. In a time where everything is unpredictable, I'm running to prioritize what we can control, ensuring families have resources, are supported, and are not alone. I've spent half my life as a student in this district, and since I was a teenager, have worked hands-on to support our community. That is what our district needs right now, and I am here to help.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. First, I just want to thank the League again. This was a great event. And since I got an extra 30 seconds, I'll say thank you to Ellen Smith and Sigrid Dinsky, Louise Valenti, Nancy Shepherd, Rachel Kellerman, Sue Hermsen, Liz Jensen.
The whole list.
Jeff McGinnis, all of whom I, great, I want to get, give you all a shout out because I know how hard it is to pull these things off, and this was a really good event. I love our schools. We've got some very important work to do over the next few months to make sure our kids can learn during the most disruptive period in our and their entire lives. It'll be challenging, and some of it may be controversial, but if we focus on kids and families and making sure we meet their needs, we will get through it. When this is eventually over, we'll have the same issues that we had before, plus some new ones. The good news is PAUSD has the resources to be a great school district. We've got money, we've got teachers, we've got great teachers, we've got wonderful and supportive families. What we need, though, is to focus on the specific things we want to accomplish and hold our leaders accountable for them. We haven't always done that in the past. I think that's been a major miss on our part of our organization. While we've had good intentions, we haven't always gotten the results that we should. That's what I'm working toward, especially in closing the achievement gap for our most challenged and least resourced students. I've appreciated the chance to represent you the last four years and get the district on a better track, and I'd love a chance to continue to serve our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Latimerak.
Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to be here and to everyone for attending. I am in this race for students. If elected, I will push for board action to establish student task forces at each high school, charged with bringing a representative voice to the board on the big intractable issues in our district. Students are the experts about what is going on in our schools, and we are missing the metric of their wisdom, and this undermines the board's ability to provide governance and oversight. I also want to improve the metric of parent and family input to avoid overrepresentation by those who already feel empowered to speak up. If elected, I am committed to proactively reaching out to students and families, teachers and staff, to making myself visible and accessible. It takes time to build trust, and I plan to keep showing up until I do. I may not always agree with you, but I will always listen, and I will always value and represent your perspective. You know, kids are funny and smart and strong and kind and wise. Their capacity is limitless, and they deserve schools that make them believe all these things about themselves. By many metrics, PAUSD leads the nation in public education, but I believe we can be even better. I believe we can be the gold standard in providing all students with an education that is academically enriching, equitably delivered, and fosters the mental wellness and resiliency they need in order to thrive. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And Ms. DeBrienza.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming, and thank you to the League, who is always working so hard to educate us all. The next year is going to be filled with uncertainty. We're going to have to be flexible, empathetic, and at times, I'm sure, bold. We're going to have to continue to provide extra wellness supports and academic supports, and we will have to be agile as conditions and needs change. Beyond COVID, we have important issues that remain. We have a dyslexia plan we have yet to fully implement. We are still aligning secondary courses and grading standards and assessments. The need for wellness support is higher than ever, and the systemic work in serving all kids equally is just beginning. We won't always agree on the decisions, but we can come together after the decisions are made to make sure we're all moving all stakeholders forward safely and respectfully. Now more than ever, my lived experience as a parent in both elementary and secondary in this district makes me uniquely qualified to lead through this critical time. This is a time for experienced leadership, empathy for all stakeholders, and renewed efforts to build systems that are rigorous, just, and equitable. Thank for, thank you for your consideration in giving me another four years to do this important work.
Hey, thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Palo Alto and the PTA Council, I want to thank the candidates for their dedication to our children and our schools in choosing to run for office and for coming to this forum. And I want to say that we are blessed with the choices that we have. I appreciate having heard from all of you and be aware of how much you care. I also want to thank our audience for their engagement in the democratic process. Here is a graphic with some information about voting resources. We particularly want to encourage you to visit VotersEdge.org, which is the League's website for nonpartisan and expanded information about candidates and ballot measures and links to other sources of information about the upcoming election. Voter registration is available at the Secretary of State website, that's the sos.ca.gov. The deadline to register, if you have not already, is October 19th, but you may still register conditionally and vote at any vote center after that date. You may, at the vote centers, you may vote from October 31st through November 3rd. This year, all voters will receive vote-by-mail ballots after you've registered. The majority of ballots were mailed out on October 5th. It's easy, secure, and convenient to vote either by mail or to drop off your ballot at a secure ballot drop box. The locations of these drop boxes is listed in the ballot that you've received, or your sample ballot, if you have already received that. If you must visit a vote center to vote in person, for example, if you need help, assistance in filling out your ballot, or if you've made a mistake and you want to replace your ballot, which you are entitled to do, you should know that appropriate precautions are being taken at all vote centers to keep people safe during the pandemic, including mask requirements and social distancing. We hope you will encourage your friends, neighbors, and family to vote in this election. If you have any further questions, you can call this number. We encourage you to vote early, vote safe, and be heard by November 3rd. Again, thank you all, and good night.